...have convened into our town council regular meeting. In just a moment, I will ask you to stand and will be led in an invocation by Reverend Evan Cowley of the Fellowship United Methodist Church. And after that, remain standing and will be led in our pledges to the American flag first and then the Texas flag by Mayor Pro Tem Philip Schoffner. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for the blessing of this day. This day, September 11th, where we remember the fallen. We thank you, God, for the gift of their lives that they gave and for this time that we especially pause to remember them. We thank you for their service. God, we pray that your Spirit is with us as we meet this evening, that the right things may be done for this town, that it continues to grow and develop and men and women and boys and girls continue to grow and develop as a result of the great community that we have here. So lead us as a town. Lead us in this meeting. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Well, I want to welcome everybody to our council meeting. We are going to pause for a moment of silence as we each, in our own way, remember the events that happened in 2001 on September 11th and how that affected our lives and pause to remember those that lost their lives, not only that day but afterwards, based on the effects. So please honor those by celebrating a moment of silence. I recognize today, as I saw Facebook, that there were a number of people that didn't even realize that we had celebrated a event today when we were at the fire station this morning for our 9/11 memorial service. If you have never been there and seen the monument that we had constructed there that has a piece of steel from the World Trade Center, you might want to go by and see it. And remember next year that roughly at 8:30 in the morning, we will once again have a memorial activity observing what happened to this country on 9/11. So remember that. It is time for citizens' presentations. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So I do have some people that signed up to speak during this time, at least I think they're wanting this time. Mike Braunon, are you wanting to speak during this time? Please come forward, state your name and address into the microphone, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Branham. I live at 2887 Redford Drive in Trophy Club, Texas. So I wanted to say good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. Appreciate your time this evening. This is to share information with you about an idea and a concept that myself and you can see the two people standing behind me who will speak momentarily about an inaugural event that we'd like to start in the town as citizens and the community. So this is something that would be for the community, really and kind of by the community if you want to, when you think about who all was involved, to include the Trophy Club, Emergency Volunteers Association, and also Angels Fall Up. So I'll jump right in, only a few slides here, but just to kind of give you some context about what's being proposed and is still available for kind of some influence in terms of if the city had some sort of input and feedback to us on ways that we could better implement this idea. But essentially, the overall goal of, you know, a turkey trot, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. This is what we're aiming for, is to create a fun community event, right? We want to bring families and community members together during a holiday where, you know, really, we're all about giving thanks and, you know, enjoying time together. We think, what better way to start a day like that with, you know, some sort of activity before we stuff our mouths with a bunch of calories and pie and turkey and stuffing, right? But also, take an opportunity to showcase the beautiful town. And then really kind of the other component of this is to raise proceeds for cancer research and also in support of goals for our local community and the TCEVA. So this is conceptual at this point, could be subject to change, again, depending on any sort of feedback that we may receive from the town or any sort of community organizations that would like to participate as well. But you can kind of see, generally speaking, this is something I think the town is familiar with in terms of a starting location for this type of event and access to the trail system, beginning at Byron Nelson High School. You can see that there's, I'm using actually a city map that I found on the website here to kind of indicate, you know, the stars of potential start and stop point. And there's kind of a turnaround point indicated by a U-turn arrow there on the trail. But just kind of give you an idea of, you know, an idea for what a potential route could be. With that, just kind of a really simple, high-level overview, I'm going to go ahead and let the two women behind me speak about this as well.
Please state your name and address as you get ready to talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sanders and Council. My name is Sarah Collins. I reside at 2845 Sherwood Drive. I've been a resident of Trophy Club for two years, and I'm here representing Angels Fall Up. Angels Fall Up was incorporated as a nonprofit entity in 2012. It was organized and operated, and is operated, to raise support and awareness for the fight against cancer undertaken by the cutting-edge UT Southwestern Harold Simmons Comprehensive Center Cancer Institute in Dallas. Angels Fall Up is dedicated to, one, nurturing a local, local, local partnership to fight cancer for North Texas; two, a vision for a world free of cancer; and then a four-fold mission to increase funding for cancer research and treatment, to honor those we've lost to cancer, to celebrate survivors, and to support caregivers. And finally, a simple goal of less angels falling up to cancer. Experientially, Angels Fall Up has been partnering with the Colony Running Club in the colony on half marathon now. This will be the sixth year. We started out with 300 runners registered the first year, and now we are at capacity, had over 1,000 runners last year. And so, again, experientially, Angels Fall Up has experience with race organization directing and working with a community on a local, local, local event.
Hi, my name is Pam Pipkins. I live at 2827 Exeter Drive. I'm the current president for the Trophy Club Emergency Volunteers Association, the We're honored to be part of the Turkey Trot. We do lend our full support to Angels Fall Up. We believe it would be a fun family event and a great benefit to the Trophy Club community. The revenue generated will enable us to better serve our police and fire departments and to help raise funds for cancer research. We do see a win-win for everyone involved and for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a couple more slides, if you all allow for it. What you're looking at actually is pictures from the Colony Half Marathon. Using this is just kind of an example to show, hey, this is kind of the attendance and this is the type of success that I think we can experience here in the community. A little bit of background, my family and I moved to Trophy Club in late 2016, early 2017, and it was kind of before that, we lived in the colony in Lewisville. So there's kind of that connection with that community. So I don't want that perspective to be lost on you all. I think it's important. But really, kind of in conclusion, I realize that today, this can simply be just informational in nature and that council can't take any sort of action, but we would love to have some sort of gesture of support from the city if that's something that could be entertained in the future. So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. So Mike, I think you have been informed by our City Sec that you really need to probably work through town staff at this point. So Mr. Klass is over here, if you haven't met him, and Tony is here somewhere over there. Raise your hand, Tony, in charge of parking wrecks. There is a special events committee that you would need to go through to get this to happen, but staff can guide you through some of that and we can get some more information and then see how the town might be involved with it.
Thank you, Mayor.
But thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, so that's everybody that signed up to speak for citizens' presentations. Did anybody want to speak during citizens' presentations but didn't sign up for it? All right, we will then move on to Item One, Announcements and Reports. Receive Town Manager Klass's update and provide input regarding the following: PD-25, PD-30, Community Cleanup, and Sound Wall. Mr. Klass.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to update you on PD-25. For those of you that weren't able to make the tour of the HG Supply Company this afternoon, I will tell you, it's a very impressive setup they have, and I think it's going to be something that's going to be enjoyed very much by all those in the community in the near future. Contractors making really good progress on the exterior masonry of the building, which you all know is very weather-dependent, and so it slowed down a little bit over the last couple of weeks. Work on the interior walls, the electrical mechanical rough-in, the plumbing and fire sprinkler rough-in, all remain on schedule with the project. Parking lot, I'm happy to report, is still on schedule with the project, should be done in late October. And I've been told from the developer that they anticipate the building will be ready for a CO late fourth quarter of 2018, and HG Supply will be ready to open in late first quarter of 2019. So everything's on schedule. With regard to PD-30, the recent wet weather has created some scheduling delays for the Trophy Club Town Center. That said, the primary infrastructure, which includes water, sanitary sewer mains, storm drains, and grates, are all complete. Continued work on the retaining walls was called off recently because of the rains that we've had, but it's been rescheduled for next week, and that should be moving along. And I'm happy to announce that the building permits have been issued for the apartment complex and the parking garage, and thus far, they've resulted in the remittance of approximately $167,000 in permitting fees. So we're moving along on that project. With regard to the community cleanup, that will take place this year, scheduled for Saturday, October 6th, 2018. It will take place at Byron Nelson High School between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. As in the past, crews will be on hand to accept all household items from Trophy Club residents, with the exception of medicinal waste. We're expecting another great turnout for this event as we've had in the past, and we would encourage all our residents to take advantage of the opportunity to clean up a little bit and rid themselves of any unwanted items that are around the homes. And then lastly, a little bit of an update on the sound wall. As most of you all know, that Traverse Highway 114, sound wall's nearing completion. As a matter of fact, the east wall is 100% complete. The only thing remaining is a little bit of sod work that weather permitting should be done this week. And as far as the west wall, that's considered at 60% completion right now, with additional panels to be set, installation of the column caps, some sod, and some final painting. Tech Dot tells us, as of this week, that they're expecting that the entire project should be completed in November, again, weather permitting. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions on these items?
Yeah, on PD-30, on PD-30, is that all that you're reviewing as far, you have the permits, but is anything else being reviewed at this point?
I'm not aware of anything else at this point, please. Okay, I'm sorry, I've been corrected. The retail is being reviewed.
Just retail, nothing else?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no one's asking to speak, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, I'm going to remove item number six. Purpose of that, it is a change to an ordinance, and it calls for the fact that we consider that slightly differently. So at this time, I would entertain a motion. Does anybody wish to remove any other item? Sorry. Hearing none, why don't we entertain a motion to approve items two through five?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve consent items two through five.
Do you have a second?
A second.
So have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Schoffner, a second by Jensen. All in favor of the consent agenda items two through five, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. I'll bring up item number six, Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding An Ordinance Amending Section A 1.08 Fire Plan Review and Section A 109 Fire Division of Article A 1.00 General Provisions of Appendix A Fee Schedule Within the Town Code of Ordinances and Provide For An Effective Date. The only reason that it was removed is that our charter calls for the fact that an ordinance should be considered an open session, well, this was open session, and should be voted upon, well, it would be a vote on a consent agenda, but it also calls for the ability for people to speak on that if they wish to. So that's the reason I pulled it. So does anybody wish to speak on item six?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-16.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, Schoffner moved it, a second by Councilmember Jensen. Did you want to say anything, Chief, or?
Not if it's motion carries.
Well, once we vote, you won't be able to say anything.
Mayor and Council, thank you for looking at this item in a little more detail. This was an opportunity for us to correct a couple of minor scripters errors and to, it was our attempt to make the ordinance read a little more clearly and make it more user-friendly for any contractors and staff that may be looking at this item.
Thank you, Chief. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Anybody wishing to say anything? I see no one wishing to speak. Call for the vote. All those approving item number six, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It does carry. It is 7:17 p.m., and we are going to enter into public hearing for, regarding the proposed tax rate for fiscal year October 1, 2018, to September 30, 2019, and to announce the date and time for the place of the tax rate. Currently, we are considering a proposed tax rate for the town to be .451442 per $100 valuation, and we will vote on that tax rate September 25 at 7:00 p.m. here in these chambers. Anyone wish to speak on the public hearing? Holly, we didn't have anybody, did we?
No, Mayor.
All right, don't see anyone wishing to speak. So at this time, it is 7:18, and I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move on to the regular session, item number eight. Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding A Proclamation Of The Town Council Recognizing September 2018 As Suicide Awareness Month For Trophy Club And Provide An Effective Date. At this time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Fleury to read proclamation 2018-12 and to make some remarks.
Thank you. Tonight's proclamation will be accepted by Ms. Jamie Farber, who is the Director of Guidance and Counseling for NISD. Our district is very supportive and proactive when it comes to initiatives such as mental health, suicide, and anti-bullying awareness, and they also place great emphasis on our students' social and emotional learning. Our very own Trophy Club schools all have programs in place, starting at the elementary level with Beck Elementary. They have a Character Counts program, multicultural awareness and appreciation, as well as a Beck Bulldog Code, which supports important initiatives like kindness and anti-bullying. Medlin Middle School has a character council consisting of students, parents, and staff who actually help lead Medlin in becoming a national school of character. Other programs include school-wide social and emotional learning and empathy projects for both students and staff, as well as a program on the signs of suicide and prevention. Byron Nelson High School is also committed to their students' social and emotional learning, so much so that they received the RAMP designation, showing their counseling program is comprehensive, data-driven, aligned with a nationally accepted and recognized model, and is committed to helping students achieve academically and through social and emotional learning and support. Byron is the only school in Texas to have achieved this distinction in 2018. They have also instituted a back-to-pack theme, which encompasses the elements be proud, be accepting, be courageous, and be knowledgeable. They have several programs in place, such as Character Strong and the Task Program, Resolve to Rise, Change Lives, as they work to meet the challenge of mental wellness in our schools and the Signs of Suicide Prevention Program. And lastly, all of our Trophy Club schools were the shining stars in our community-wide First Annual Campaign for Kindness last year. So as the proclamation is read tonight, please remember that. We all have a part to play, and preventing suicide involves everyone in the community. Town and Trophy Club Texas proclamation number 2018-12, a proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas, supporting September 2018 as Suicide Awareness Month in Trophy Club Texas and providing an effective date. Whereas suicide rates have risen over 30% in almost every state since 1999, becoming a major public health concern; and whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death in the U.S. and the second-leading cause of death for youth ages 10 through 24; and whereas Americans attempt suicide estimated 1.1 million times annually, with 575,000 being teenagers; and whereas more young adults die from suicide than from cancer, heart disease, AIDS, birth defects, stroke, pneumonia, influenza, and chronic lung disease combined; and whereas one American dies by suicide every 12 minutes, with nearly 45,000 suicides in 2016, of which veterans comprise 22.2%; and whereas in the United States, 90% of those who die by suicide had a diagnosable psychiatric disorder at the time of their death; and whereas many people who died never received effective behavioral health services for reasons including the difficulty of access, the stigma of using behavioral health treatment, and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide; and whereas the more the public understands about suicide prevention, the more likely we'll see the rate of suicide begin to decrease. Now therefore, I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Suicide Awareness Month. I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It is passed. So Ms. Farber, did you want to say anything? I don't know where you are, but back there, okay. Did you want to say anything?
I don't mind.
If you'll come to the microphone, state your name and address, please, and then you can speak.
Oh, I'm actually a Trophy Club resident. My name is Jamie Farber, sorry, and my address is 214 Phoenix Drive. So I am the Director of Counseling for the school district. This is my hometown, so I'm very happy to be here and to accept the proclamation on behalf of the school district. So I'm always grateful for your support, for Alicia's support in mental health. I was here last year for the same purpose, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, ma'am. You'll go back here to my right. We're going to take a picture, if you would, please. Alicia, you want to come back there? This was an item that we tabled at our last meeting. It's case SP-AMD-18-001. Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding Request To amend The Approved Site Plan For Fellowship United Methodist Church, Generally Located Northwest Of Trophy Club Drive And Approximately 140 Feet Southwest Of Indian Creek Drive. At this time, we'll have a report by our town planner, Lisa Payne. Lisa, up you go to the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was tabled at the August 28 council meeting so that the applicant could return with plans that include an eight-foot-tall masonry wall along the common property line with residential lot 405 and along Sunset Drive between the parking lot and the street, as well as revised perimeter landscaping. The revised plans fully comply with the parking ordinance and the landscape ordinance. The applicant obeyed council's request for an eight-foot-tall masonry wall along the residential property and along Sunset Drive. I'll show it to you right here, in case you can't see it very well. The wall starts right here, near Portland, and goes all the way down to the edge of the residential property and meets the existing wall down right about here. The required perimeter trees are shown on the church side of the walls, and new sod and irrigation are to be installed, including in the right-of-way on the street side of the wall. The applicant's proposal complies with the parking and landscape ordinances, so staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. I do have a request to speak from Philip Schoffner.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the amended site plan as presented.
So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Schoffner, a second by Jensen. I do have some citizens that signed up to speak, counsel. If you'll give me a moment, I'll give those people an opportunity to speak. But first, if you would like to speak, I see that Greg Lamont would like to speak.
This is more directed at staff, I realize they're not required to put a wall all the way down past Portland, but I think we need to monitor that and perhaps put up some kind of dead-end barrier or something that prevents cars from jumping a curb or people walking through.
If the council deems it necessary, being that that's town right-of-way, we can put a barrier in that location.
All right, just as a point of information, that's not really on the agenda tonight to consider that. So we are considering the applicant's request. Anybody else on council wish to speak in reference to the motion? All right, I will then consider that you are ready to vote. So I'm going to go down this list, and if you want to speak, you can come to the microphone, state your name and address, and speak. If you decide not to speak, then we will proceed to vote. At this time, I did not get a request from Reverend Cowley, although if he would like to speak, I'll give him an opportunity to speak. Would you like to speak? All right, thank you. Larry Hoover, do you wish to speak?
Thank you. My name is Larry Hoover. I live at 1118 Berkshire Court, Trophy Club, Texas, two houses off of Portland Drive. We're grateful that you decided that they needed to have a masonry wall, but the neighborhood is concerned about how they're going to get their concrete trucks into the parking lot. As you know, the streets in our town are 40 years old. They were poorly done to begin with because Johnson and Logan had no oversight, and we would like the city council to insist that all the concrete trucks and construction trucks for this project enter the property off of Trophy Club Drive.
Thank you, sir. Next person, David Scott. Do you wish to speak? Name and address, please, when you speak.
David Scott, 1115 Wilshire. Two points. First, I made a point last time about, you know, when there's something that comes up, whether it's a variance or site plan change or whatever, that affects the residents of an area, could we do something about it to let people know, like the little sign that I've seen in many other cities? I know, I saw the minutes, that's not required, so I understand that. So what I'm asking is, how do I request that council or some other thing, instruct P&amp;Z and the council, just to make that information more available?
Thank you. I think you have done so by speaking tonight.
Okay, tried that last week, didn't work, but okay. Try again, hopefully that works. Then secondly-
I didn't say when it would come up, but you've made the request.
Well, Tuesday next week.
Not going to commit to that. Somebody has to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And secondly, I'm also concerned about the Portland entrance, because, I mean, people in the past have jumped that curve and driven it, and I've lived there a long time. But anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Matt Balzey, if I said that correctly. Matt, you want to come speak, please?
My name's Matt Balzey, I live at 1108 Sunset Drive. Appreciate the fact that you helped us with the wall and the neighborhood. I think it's really going to help the values in our neighborhood maintain their current levels and really provide the consistency in our neighborhood and our town that we've got throughout our town. But my main concern too, and I know my wife's too, if she could be here, she'd tell you too, is the Portland Drive issue in the future. And I did look on the website, and the earliest thing I can see is 2022, there's a reconstruction for Portland Drive on one of the budget plans from last year. But my concern is how we find out when or if Portland Drive's going to be punched all the way through, because we love our area. It's a little enclave. I mean, you have no business being in our neighborhood unless you live there or you're seeing somebody. I mean, that's one of the little things, the nuances, that we truly love. And, you know, and I've said before at the last meeting, we do have small children. I mean, I back out of my driveway, I have to make double careful that there's no kids in the street. I love having the kids in the neighborhood, but the additional traffic that it could potentially cause from the church and people just using it as a cut-through, I think, is a town need to really consider in the future. And I'll second the motion, too. My street, if you put a bulldozer or a concrete truck in front of my house, they're going to go in. I mean, I've got holes in my street. And you can watch the winter rains, it comes down the gutter, and you can watch the rain fly up like a geyser. But there's not capacity for a lot of weight on those streets. But that's all I have. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Bruce Maury. Bruce, you want to speak? You're good?
Sure, thanks.
All right, thank you. Tommy Rapper. Tommy, I think you represent the church. Did you want to speak?
No, I'm good, thank you, ma'am.
All right. Brad Milliken.
I'm good, thank you.
All right. And Robert Clark.
Hi, Mayor.
All right.
Robert Clark, 1113 Sunset Drive, Trophy Club. I just wanted to just request of the Council, just like the other neighbors in my neighborhood, just that we restrict traffic on Portland Drive as the construction takes place. I'm very pleased with the changes that were made in the plat plan for the construction of the parking lot and the town wall, and just want to thank the church for doing such a great job of that in two weeks. But my concern is too, with two small children, is construction vehicles and such going to Portland Drive during the course of construction, and of course, is a future state of a cut-through. So if that could ever be added as an agenda item, or at least we can get notification if it does become an agenda item, we very much appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic that didn't sign up?
We've got.
Oh, okay.
We have Joshua Talbot next to speak.
All right, Joshua, you want to come speak, please?
My name is Josh Talbot, and I live at 1107 Portland Drive. And if it's okay, I want to point to the map where I live. My property butts up with the wall. And my question is, there's a dotted line that extends right there where the wall will not be, and I'm wondering what that represents, because I'd ideally like the wall to extend all the way so there would not be a way for people to get around through the parking lot and into my yard or into our neighborhood. The chain-link fence that separates the cemetery from the church property has a giant hole in it, and I see lots of people that do cut through the church property and through the cemetery. And so it's definitely a thoroughfare currently, and I feel like a wall that would extend all that way would block people. So I just wanted to bring that forward and question what that dotted line represents.
All right, I get an answer for you from our Town Planner that you asked.
Which dotted line are you referring to?
Right here.
That's the landscape buffer line.
The landscape buffer line, okay. And the wall ends right?
Correct.
Right there.
It ends right there.
Yeah, so I have a motion that maybe it would continue all the way, would be ideally right.
All right, thank you. So Philip Schaffner wishes to speak. Philip?
Yeah, just to clarify that point, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I sent an email to our attorney, and we can't require that. So just so you're aware of that.
We can't require the wall to be extended that far?
Correct, not past what their project is.
All right.
And while I have the floor, I would like to thank the church for, you did exactly what we asked, and you came back with something the residents can see exactly what's going to go there. And so that's exactly what we were wanting, so I appreciate that.
All right. Deborah Edmondson. Edmon...Edmondson, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Deborah Edmondson. I live at 1730 Tusken Ridge Circle, which is in South Lake, Texas. I'm an attorney, and I'm here this evening representing James and Arlene Sperry, who live at 1136 Sunset Drive. And if you'll look on the site plan, it is, they, I don't know if this works, but yeah, their lot is right here. And when this process started back at planning and zoning, I was there and I spoke for, on their behalf, in front of planning and zoning, and planning and zoning, as you will note, in Ms. Payne's letter to you, recommended an eight-foot masonry wall. There was specific discussion about the woodcrete wall being removed, and it was passed as an eight-foot masonry wall. When we were here at council last week, and I know there was no motion, I came away with the understanding that there was going to be an eight-foot masonry wall that ran, what council wanted, and this was just my understanding, that council would allow, wanted an eight-foot masonry wall running the front of the property, but then also fully along the side. And then when I looked at the site plan, I was surprised to see that the woodcrete wall that's there now was still in existence. And then when I looked at the material planned for the masonry wall, it says brick. So I'm a little confused as to, is the woodcrete wall staying? My clients would like, you know, one continuous wall of the brick wall. And if they're going to do part brick and part masonry, I mean, part woodcrete, how does that connect? And one of their concerns about having the eight-foot masonry wall is the security issue. And then also, it would be the aesthetic issue of having a partial brick wall and a partial woodcrete wall. So again, I'm here with the same request I've had each time I've had the privilege to speak here at Trophy Club, that my clients would like to see just a solid eight-foot masonry wall running the length of their property. And according to the materials that I read and what was posted, and I think you have in yours too, that it's planned to be brick. So that's what we'd request, just the eight-foot brick masonry wall, which apparently is what the rest of the wall's going to be.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So Ron and Roe, you speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. I want to make it clear that from my perspective, one of the things I wanted to make sure that we accomplished was that if the church's plans complied with the zoning ordinance, that I would be in favor. I'm not a big fan of getting way down into the weeds about private property owners and their aesthetic choices when they modify their property, as the church is doing. As an attorney, ma'am, I'm sure you understand we're in no position to force them to do that. So I just want to make sure that there's no disambiguation there. The plans do, the plans do meet the zoning ordinance, so that's why I intend to support it.
All right. Anybody on Council wish to make a comment? Any questions? All right, we do have a motion and a second before us to approve Item Nine, Case SP-AMD-18-001, for the approved site plan. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. It does carry. Thank everyone for coming tonight and for speaking. As Mayor Protim Schaffner expressed to the church, we really appreciate the fact that you took and listened to council and the citizens, and hopefully we've met a good solution for everyone involved. Thank you very much. We will move on to Item Number Ten. Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding An Ordnance of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas Adopting and Approving the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2018 and Ending September 30, 2019 for Trophy Club Economic Development Corporation 4B, Making Appropriations Providing for Expenditures as Allowed by Applicable Law and Providing an Effective Date. At this time, we will have a short report by Jonathan Phillips and then Consider Ordinance 2018-17.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor stated, this is the council consideration of adopting the EDC budget for 2019. As we've shown you before, this budget was considered at the EDC meeting on July 26 of 2018, and they recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Seeing no one requesting to speak, I would entertain a motion to approve the EDC 4B 2019-2010 budget.
I saw a move.
Second?
I think that was Jensen that got the second.
No, I don't know. Maybe it was Schaffner. Okay, so I believe it was a motion made by Councilmember Roe and seconded by Jensen. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimously approved. We will move on to Item 11. Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding An Ordnance of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas Adopting and Approving the Budget for Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2018 and Ending September 30, 2019. For the Town of Trophy Club, Making Appropriations Providing for Expenditures as Allowed by Applicable Law, Providing for Filing of Documents, Repealing Conflicting Ordinances, and Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Phillips, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This item is to consider adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget. Real quick, following council's budget goals, what this budget does is provide property tax relief. It maintains INS rate at 11 cents. We were able to successfully establish a capital equipment replacement plan and prepare for Phase Three of the Trophy Wood Development. Want to talk about a few changes that were made since our last presentation on the 28th. What we're presenting to you tonight for consideration is a half-cent decrease in the property tax rate. This was done by really four main areas, to summarize. We looked at using some dedicated revenue sources, such as our streets, maintenance tax, Trophy Club Park, to move some funding into those dedicated revenue sources for personnel purposes. Also, thanks to some historical information and institutional knowledge from Mayor Protim Schaffner, we were able to track down a couple of leases that were signed in the past, and we've been in the process of recovering revenues from those leases. So there's an increase of tower revenue in this budget. So we appreciate that information. That was a huge help to us. And then there was also a portion of savings from the recent reorganization internally in our administrative services and finance department. Looking at the big picture, as you can see, those changes are noted here. Your fund balance percent of expenditures goes to 40%, which is 151 operating days. And then the only other mention we wanted to bring up is this also includes the one-time permit revenues that Town Manager Tom Klass mentioned earlier today, and we've proposed moving those into the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. So with that change, as well as the 2010 tax notes, excuse me, you're sitting at a little over half a million dollars in your equipment replacement fund. Be happy to answer any specific questions you may have about the budget.
Council, any questions about this? Appreciate all the work that was done on this. At this time, if no one has any questions, and I don't see anybody asking to speak, any citizens wish to ask questions about the budget? All right. I am really proud of the fact that we're beginning a process of establishing our capital fund for replacement. I think it's significant for us, for this to really happen in our town. We're glad, I think, that we're making those steps and look forward to that. I think that will help us, we'll look back 10 years from now and really appreciate the fact that this began. So thank you for working all of that out, everybody. And my personal thanks to staff for working hard responding to council's needs and working through the process, and to the, whatever we're called, Budget Finance Committee of the Council for meeting with staff and working through that. So thank you very much. This is an item that would require a roll-call vote, just to let you know that. So I will go down the list, and you need to respond in some fashion whether or not you vote to approve the budget or not as presented.
First, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-18, adopting budget for fiscal year 2019. Second?
So Councilmember Roe moved and seconded by Mayor Protim Schaffner. You thought I wasn't going to ask for that.
I had a feeling you were trucking down that road, ready to take a vote.
I wasn't, and I didn't want Eric to be like, hey, man. Yeah, I got you. I got a big clock back here. I know the time now.
True. Someone gets on you, go, do you know what time it is?
Okay. All right. So we do have a motion and a second before us to approve our budget, and so I'm going to go down the list and ask you to respond audibly, please. Councilmember Fleury, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Roe?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Affirmative.
Councilmember Lamont?
Affirmative.
Mayor Protim Schaffner?
Yes.
Mayor Sanders?
Affirmative.
All right, the motion does carry unanimously to approve the budget. Thank you, everyone, for doing that. So for everyone's purposes, we will set our tax rate based on this budget at the next council meeting. All right, Item Number 12. Consider Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Resolution Accepting an Annual Service and Assessment Plan Update for Authorized Services, Emergency Services, for the Trophy Club Public Improvement District Number One, the Highlands of Trophy Club, and the Proposed Assessment Role, Setting a Date for Public Hearing, Authorizing the Publication of Notice and Directing the Mailings of Notices as Required by Law, Enacting Other Provisions Related There Too, and Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Phillips?
Yes, Mayor and Council. As you're familiar, this is a requirement every year of the PID for the Emergency Services District. This will be on your agenda at the next council meeting for a public hearing, and the PIT Administrator, David Tosack and Associates, will be here and available if you have any specific questions at your next meeting. If this were to pass tonight, mailings would go out to the residents, and then we'd establish that public hearing.
All right. Council, any questions? Hearing, seeing no one wishing to speak, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-16, accepting an annual service assessment plan update for authorized services for Trophy Club Public Improvement District Number One, and setting a date for public hearing of September 25, 2018.
Do you have a second? All right. We do have a motion by Councilmember Roe, a second by Councilmember Fleury. Any questions that anyone wishes to ask about this? Any citizens wishing to speak? Don't see anyone seeking the floor. We would then vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2018-16, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Item 13. Discussion of Items for Future Agenda To Include Agenda Items for Consideration on the September 25 Council Agenda and Items from the Town Council Future Agenda List. Item A considers Item Number Four on the Future Agenda Items List, Discussion Take Appropriate Action Regarding Parkland Dedication Policy. And Item B, which was coming from the Future Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion Take Appropriate Action Regarding Updating the Town's Stormwater Master Plan. So I do have Financial Services Director Phillips, who's going to make some comments about Item A.
Yes, Mayor and Council. As a follow-up, this is an update strictly for the Parkland Dedication Fund policy. Staff is working with other cities to look at best practices in developing that policy. We hope to come forward soon with a draft. I believe that's something that would need to perhaps be looked at by the Parks and Recreation Board and the Finance Subcommittee. Board and the Finance Subcommittee as well, and then we bring that to council if council is amenable to that.
All right. So Eric, you have to speak.
I don't recommend taking it to the park board. I mean, this needs to be a policy from council. I'd rather we have that discussion and set the ground rules.
Absolutely.
All right. And Ryland, you wish to speak?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that it would help create, part of what it would do would create a framework for them, right? So that's a good point. I'd agree with that.
Any other discussion? All right, seems like no one wishes to speak opposite to that advice, and so staff can then take that and move forward for us, please.
Thank you.
And then item B, Director of Community Development, Tommy Uzi, is going to speak to us first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in June, it was entertained to go ahead and look into the updating of the Trophy Club master, or stormwater master plan in regards to specifically three different locations, which are the Skyline, Fresh Meadow, and Indian Creek sites that were upgraded. And that would be a hydraulic study, which would need to be done. I've been speaking, we're reaching out to Freezing Nichols in regards to the issue to set up a pattern. It's kind of like a Phase Two plan of going through this. I think it was back in 2014, November 11, 2014, when it first came through and put out. We did obtain and secure and file the easement at the Creekmere location where Skyline Creek passes under Indian Creek. So that opens up the door for the opening, if possible or probable, with the possible hydraulics coming through there to be opened up at some future date. Specifically, talking with Kelly Dillard, which did the original study on it. What they need to do is run surveys through there for the ESBIls, add that to and update their models to see what the hydraulics would do upstream and downstream of both parts before they could make any decisions. But they do say they, and I think it goes back to the 14 plan as well, to offer at least three different options of what we could do at that point.
Any questions? Do we have any kind of rough estimate as to what that will cost us?
They're working on that currently, and I should have it by the end of the week.
All right, fine. Council, any other questions of this particular item?
The only other, you mentioned the three that we've improved, but I also want to see, you know, what Westlake has done and what that's, how that's going to affect us as well.
I've been working on that as well, and at first it was thought that the file was too large to send, but like in most cities, they do and are requiring the fact that we did Open Records Act, which I'm working on now to get that information. Based on that last rain last week, which was just overwhelming everything, it was under scrutiny and being watched very closely, and operated just like it was supposed to. And we actually got less flow than we would have anywhere else. On that particular site, they've put enough detention ponds that catch a lot of that sheet flow, and that's why they were designed. So even though the water was coming over the dam, it wasn't being breached, but it was coming over to the dam like it was designed. It didn't put the centralized flow right down the center of the creek and run into us. Chances are, that particular night when we got that rain, if it wouldn't have been there, we'd have felt it a whole lot worse.
Yeah, I'd like them to look at it as well.
Right, as soon as they get that study, that will be sent, we'll get with Tignal and Freezing Nichols both.
And do we have money? We have resources in our stormwater drainage fund, correct? Okay.
Thank you. All right. Council, any other questions on that particular topic? We then will go to our future agenda list, and does anyone have an item that they wish to add or remove to the future agenda list?
Can I talk about the next meeting's proposed agenda?
Absolutely.
Can we move item 10 to October? Proclamation?
I have no objection to that. Alicia, do you?
What was it?
Item 10, which is the bullying prevention month.
Recognizing October. Can we do it in October?
Greg?
Yeah, I got it. I have a couple of items. Short-term rentals, several that surround the areas are putting ordinance in effect to restrict that. I'd like to revisit the sign ordinance. There seems to be some dispute as far as what's legal and what can be, what the days are. And I'd like a clarification, are there future agenda items where we should look at the rules of procedures? But the definition in defining when somebody abstains from a vote, or if somebody doesn't vote, they're considered abstaining and voting no. Can we clarify that?
You're talking about abstaining versus conflict of interest? You just abstain.
But is that considered, I don't know if we should be talking about it here, but is that considered a no vote?
No, sometimes it's considered a vote.
In our rules of procedure.
Or sometimes it's a vote in favor. I'd have to check your rules of procedure.
All right, so we're debating this topic, so there's been a request for a clarification of that and to add its future agenda. If we can get a legal opinion about that, then we can see that if we want to put it on the agenda, would that be okay, Greg?
Sure.
I'll send out whatever I find.
All right. And so...
I need some clarification on the sign ordinance and what the priority level of that is.
That's what I was going to, thank you.
Sorry.
So you wanted to add short-term rentals, and so are you looking for an ordinance? What are you looking for here, Greg?
Yes, I would say an ordinance. We have great one, it's just instituted one. I believe Southlake has one.
Is this for VRBO type things? They typically sometimes get into hot tax also.
All right, so I have Greg wish you to add that to our future agenda list. He's clarified it. Anyone on council agreeing that you'd like to have that on our agenda list?
I'll agree.
All right, so we do have Kurtz pointing that. All right. And then the other thing with sign ordinance, can you clarify that just a little bit more, Greg, for staff?
Well, we have an ordinance that says 60 days, and yet we haven't got signs for political candidates, putting them up 120 days before.
Okay, do you want to distinguish between those? Do you also want to address all of the high school signs, and student signs, and athletic signs, and kid signs, and nonprofit signs?
Well, might as well. Let's not discriminate against anyone.
So you look at the entire sign ordinance and bring it back?
Well, if there's dispute about what we passed, then we should revisit it.
All right. So we'll add to the future agenda list that we will have a consideration of our current sign ordinance, and we can have some discussion about it so that we give direction before we try to redraft the ordinance. Is that fair enough?
So that's on the future agenda item list?
Yeah. All right. And so I think that add it dealt with your issues, didn't it, Greg? All right, and so Ryland, you have to speak.
Yes, sir. Number six on our list is something that has my name beside it, and it has been done. So Holly, we can scratch that one. Establishing capital replacement fund, et cetera, and so forth.
All right, good. Philip?
Yeah, I would just like to have a placeholder on future agenda, and Chief Carroll is working on this, but something to deal with our collections in ambulance collections, out of district, in district, things like that. But it may be a while before we get it because he's working on that, and I think that then he can present what he finds to us. But I just want to have it as a placeholder so we're...
All right, so some kind of report or update on our collections for ambulance charges.
Yeah, policies, what we're going to do moving forward, things like that. Just so we're all on the same page.
All right. Holly, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you have support for that? I'll support adding that item to the agenda, and I'll support clarification of the sign ordinance. All right. Anybody else have something to add?
The sign ordinance was already on future agenda.
Which item is it?
Item number eight.
All right.
Still Lamont added it back in July. He's added it again.
Okay. Greg, you don't have any opposition of not adding it a second time, do you?
Two times.
Much better than what it's like.
Does anybody support him adding it a second time?
Why not?
No. We're good.
Why not have it once when you can have it twice?
Okay, great.
I didn't get a second for that.
I'm sorry, Holly, you have the floor.
So not the future agenda item, or keeping on the future agenda item list, not the September 25 agenda?
I'll put that on top of the priority list.
So item A already deals with that on our future agenda list?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's there. There were just comments made about it.
Yeah, it's scheduled for October 1st. Or first meeting in October.
Okay, so Schaffner wanted to speak. I'll let you speak.
No, I'll second his, the future agenda for abstaining.
Looking at the rules of procedure.
Right.
Okay.
First, I'll look to see what it is. It's abstain, it's no. I'll tell you what it is.
That's what we think it is.
But it's in our rules of procedure, so.
Okay. All right, so anybody else? Are we clear as mud, or clear?
All good.
Okay. All right. We have on our agenda the ability to go into executive session. I haven't talked to our town attorney about these things, but we have two items that you'll look at, one and two under eight. Council, do we need to go in to talk about those? Anybody wishing to do that?
Do we have updates?
Are there updates to them? All right. So it is 8:01. And item 14, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section 551-071, consultation with attorney under subsection two to consult with the town attorney on the matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct to the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act specifically, number one, breach of contract issues, and number two, federal emergency management agency. We are in... Council is 8:12, and we will reconvene into regular session. Item 15, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Does anybody have anything they would like to make a motion on? Seeing no one seeking the floor, it is 8:13. We are adjourned.